So, good evening, everyone. It's Tuesday, August 8th, 2017. We're in the council chambers for the city of Platteville at 7:00 PM. I'm Barb Doss. In the absence of our President Eileen Nichols, I will call the meeting to order. And we'll start with roll call.
Eileen Nichols has been excused. Tom Knoll?
Here.
Catherine Westeby?
Here.
Barbara Doss?
Here.
Dawn Francis?
Here.
Barbara Stackhausen?
Here.
Ken Killian?
Here.
Okay, tonight, we'll start the meeting with a special presentation. This is the formal gifting of the Outdoor Fitness Center to the city of Platteville. And we're asking those folks who have been involved to come forward. That would be Bob Hundhausen, I believe, who's President of the Platteville Community Arboretum, and his helpers. How's that? I didn't know what to call you. There were a lot of things that went through my mind. Jean Weber and Rob Saris. So you guys can come on up to the microphone.
Yeah, thanks for the promotion. I'm not the President of the PCA.
Oh, you're not? Oh, okay. Whoa.
I am on the board. But this is the Steering Committee for the Outdoor Fitness Park. And we're here tonight to tell you that the Outdoor Fitness Park, the water fountain, the lighting, has been completed. In between September, or August 15th and September 15th, the landscaping's going to be completed down there. And we would like to gift it to the city tonight. And also, we are going to be presenting the city with an $800 check for possible maintenance for equipment going forward. The equipment is mostly warranted for 15 years, but there are a couple items that hopefully this amount of money will cover. So, and we greatly appreciate the permission that was given to use this land. So, thank you very much.
Okay, actually, as a first agenda item, I'm going to ask the council if we might take that first agenda item at this time, so I can read the accepting gift whereases. There's a whole bunch of whereases, and it would be Resolution Number 1717. Accepting the gift of the Nutrition World Outdoor Fitness Center installed near the David Candy Roundtree Branch Trail starts as, whereas Jean Weber and Bob Hundhausen presented a proposal to the Park's Forestry and Recreation Committee to install and gift to the city of Platteville an outdoor fitness center along the David Candy Roundtree Branch Trail near the dog park. And whereas the outdoor fitness center would consist of an energi prime fitness system featuring five stations with 120 exercises that would be available to the entire community. And whereas the Park's Forestry and Recreation Committee recommended approval of the proposal pending approval by the common council, and a commitment from a service organization to providing ongoing maintenance. And whereas with the commitment from the high school cross-country teams, thank you, Mr. Saris, Kwanis, and Nun Optimus to provide ongoing maintenance to the common council, the common council took action on March 28th, 2017, to approve the installation of the Nutrition World Outdoor Fitness Center. And whereas the Steering Committee, which included Nate Curry, Bob Hundhausen, Bev Johansson, Rob Saris, and Jean Weber, subsequently raised the necessary funds for the project and installation costs. And whereas the Steering Committee will continue to promote sponsorship and naming rights of the center equipment, benches, bicycle racks, and water station to raise funds for the Nutrition World Outdoor Fitness Center and Roundtree Branch Trail maintenance and amenities. Whereas the Outdoor Nutrition World Outdoor Fitness Center was completed in June 2017. Now therefore be it resolved that the common council of the city of Platteville formally accepts the generous gift of the Nutrition World Outdoor Fitness Center and gives special thanks to the donors and volunteers who made it possible. And if I might have a motion from someone to adopt this resolution, we will then congratulate these folks.
I move to adopt the resolution.
A second.
So we have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 1717. Jan will vote.
No.
Yes.
Westeby?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Luke, do you want to accept a check?
Sure.
Luke didn't know what he was going to have to do there.
He said it's in the mail. Thank you for this check.
Thank you for the gift.
Yes.
So, we say thanks to the Steering Committee and all the donors. I don't know, somehow they didn't want to stay for the whole. Okay, next on our agenda is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature or previous discussion. Please indicate if you would prefer separate discussion and action. Council minutes from 7:25, 17, the regular meeting, payment of bills, they were in your packet, the financial report for July also in your packet, there are no appointments to boards or commissions tonight, the listing of licenses for one- and two-year operator licenses were in your packet, and finally, the petition for Grant County Highway Construction Aid. Do I hear a motion?
I also move that we accept the consent calendar as presented.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the consent calendar as presented. We'll vote.
No.
Yes.
Westeby?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next on the agenda are citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any. And I invite Tom Paulus to come to the microphone. Tom has some comments and questions about the current reassessment and future plans.
Good evening. My questions are, one-
Tom, just a minute, where do you live?
600 Roundtree Avenue.
Okay.
My question number one is how did the assessments get so far out of line that this reevaluation is necessary? Question number two, how much is this reevaluation costing? And three, what steps are being taken to ensure that any number of years down the road, we don't find ourselves in the same situation with the same expenses, because it can't be cheap? And finally, for the state requirement for the reassessment to kick in, it's my understanding that it has to have been out of whack for a number of years. Why was this allowed to continue? How does the city defend taxing its citizens based on what they had to know was bad data?
Mr. Paulus, if you would, can we have your listing of questions? In case we didn't get them all written? And we will prepare answers for you. But I'm, Jan, give them to Jan, because then she can see that the city manager gets them. I'm sure we have some of those answers in prior council presentations, but we'll get, we'll see that you get answers to those questions. As I told Mr. Paulus, those are all very good questions and certainly deserving of answers. So, we'll forward those on to the city manager and see that you get. Okay, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, that's the only citizen's request I had. So next on the agenda are reports. I have nothing to add for redevelopment. Anything to add for water and sewer?
I have a question on RDA.
Oh, okay.
Wonder non-performance penalty payment rebate, who is the applicant? And is this the same applicant as we learned that they have gotten a loan from another source?
85 Westman.
Correct.
Right. So, yes, it's the same person. And that loan has been paid off.
Right. It was for the Bailey Building.
Bailey Building, right.
And that loan has now been, actually, there were two loans, and they've both been paid off.
Right. Because I signed the papers today that they were totally paid off. So, yes, it was for the Bailey Building, and yes, they are totally paid off. Other questions? Any other questions on the redevelopment? Okay, then let's move on to water and sewer.
Nothing.
No additions?
Okay, and Commission on Aging, Tom?
No additions.
Zoning-
I have a question or two, if I can find it here. Okay, on first page, 3A, it says we have an agreement with ADRC. What does ADRC stand for?
I wish I could-
Disability Resource Center.
Aging and Disability-
Aging and Disability Resource Center.
Okay, then it says to reimburse us for one additional day of transportation. What does that mean as far as one additional day?
Do you want me to answer that? So in the past, they have supplied one day of transportation to the senior center, because the senior center is the ADRC meal site for the county. So they supplied one day of transportation. This year, giving the city's budget, we approached them and asked if there was something more they could do, and they agreed to reimburse us for one additional day of time. So they're not supplying the transportation on those days, but they are paying our costs for transporting the seniors during that time.
So it'll be two days a week?
The one original day that they were doing, plus that they provide the transportation 100 percent, the bus, the driver, and then they are reimbursing us for our driver cost on those, that second day.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Commission on Aging? Zoning Board of Appeals?
No.
Yep, Museum Board?
Nothing to add.
Nothing to add. Okay, the other reports that were in the packet were the City Attorney's Itemized Report for July, the Water and Sewer Financial Report for July, the Airport Financial Report for July, and Department Progress Reports. Any questions? Then we'll move along to action items, and we have already covered Action Item A, Resolution 1717, accepting the gift of the Outdoor Fitness Center. So, next we'll move to B, the Long Range Financial Plan. Is that you, Nicola?
Yes, that's me.
That's what I thought so.
Thank you. So Dawn is here from Alice Don Gunderson, and she is going to present the final financial management plan. She distributed a copy of it to you all, and I know that you all worked very hard in work sessions to pull all the information together. So, Dawn, thank you.
Thank you for the introduction. You were provided with a copy of the final version of the Long Range Financial Management Plan, and it's been bound for you. It includes some narrative and the detailed schedules of the funds that we analyzed. But to kind of give the audience and the public an opportunity to kind of hear what you've been through over the last several months, we were engaged at the end of last year to work with the council through a committee of the whole process to undertake a long-term financial management planning. And as part of that, we held a series of workshops with the committee of the whole, with the council through the committee of the whole. Those workshops were held in January, February, May, and June. And during that process, we evaluated the current financial position of the city. We benchmarked it with a lot of other communities. We looked at all the factors that are considered when a community is rated by, in your case, Standard and Poor's Rating Agency, Global Rating Agency. And we looked at the historical trends of your general fund, your, any fund that includes tax levy dollars, which is your general fund, your bus and taxi fund, your capital project fund, and your debt service fund. So we built a historical model of every line item that is budgeted for. And we worked with you as a group to determine a reasonable expectation for appreciation or increases in those costs. And we did a five-year projection of each one of those funds. We also evaluated all of your existing general obligation debt, and the funding sources for that debt, which include tax increment revenues, there's been several of your outstanding debt issues that were issued for purposes of finding, financing capital projects in your TIF districts. So we evaluated the availability of those revenue sources to support that. We also did, held a workshop that was exclusively related to your water and sewer utilities, and incorporated the capital needs for that. That was presented by my colleague, John Cameron. We've since updated that and included that in the final report here as well. So ultimately, I think the outcome to, as far as availability, this will be provided electronically. I think it's available on the website or a version of the city. I think also, you've had all the electronic versions of the presentations we've done on the workshop that can be included as well. The positive thing for the city is you're not currently constrained by levy limits. So you have the ability to increase taxes for those things that you choose to. That's not the case in many communities throughout the state that are, they're constrained by net new construction. You have that potential, plus an additional amount of levying capacity. However, you do have some outstanding debt issues and structuring of some debt issues that were putting some burden on the tax levy. So through these workshops and through some difficult decisions, I believe, on the part of the council, and evaluating the revenue sources available, and primarily to support debt and capital needs, you've elected to address this in a fashion that we'll talk about on our next issue. But I think the primary thing to come across here is, is the need to look at, our next item was related to some struggles that your Tax Increment District Number Six is having, there's, which is the industrial park. And some of the values have not materialized, but there was a lot of infrastructure that was put into place. So there's debt service needs that are coming up in the future that need to be addressed. And there's, at this particular point in time, the revenues forecasted from that district are not quite adequate to meet that debt. So with, to avoid that going on to the tax levy, we'll be talking about the outcome of this in terms of the restructuring of outstanding debt. One of the other decisions that was made in terms of the capital financing needs and future borrowing is that the council made a decision to evaluate on an annual basis, but to kind of limit the borrowing for future debt to be no greater than the levy-supported debt that's dropping off. So I think that was a big decision to be made as well. I think the important thing to keep in mind with this is it's a plan based upon a set of statistics and data as of, as we know now. And I can report to you today that from the time we've completed this process and finalized the report, we now have new data available to us from the Department of Revenue on property values. And from, just in summary, from the time we adopted this, you, your overall tax base for purposes of tax value in the city has increased at a greater level than what we had forecasted here. Your net new construction was actually larger. It was 0.98 percent, which is a levying potential for you. We were projecting that at about 0.75, so that is a larger number. Your economic growth was not quite as large, but overall, the overall tax base went up. We are slightly less for our TID-out tax base, so a lot of your growth was in your tax increment districts, which is a positive on another front in that when it comes to tax increment District Number Five, you're sharing that revenue with District Seven. That tax base is a little bit higher, so that creates a little bit more revenue to be able to share. And the values in TIF District Number Six are actually a little higher than we were forecasting, which means that there's less of a need to support that debt service with levy. If that value holds for the remaining life of the district, it's about $49,000 a year, 49 to 50,000. So, that's a real positive. If you choose to adopt your 2018 budget, as was presented in this plan, it may free up some additional capacity for capital projects that, because it will not be needed so much for debt service. So, there's a lot of information in this document. It changes annually. You'll be making decisions on an annual basis as you adopt your budget. Just because we've forecasted in the plan doesn't mean you have to live by everything that was done in here, but I think it's been a great exercise and a good process for the council to go through to have a global picture of looking at everything and how everything fits together. Not just your general fund, but the impacts of all your TIF funds, your capital project funds, and debt service needs going forward. We evaluated the operations over a five-year period, but our projections for debt goes out much longer than five years, and in efforts to try to maintain and be, and have a sustainable capital plan. So I'm certainly happy to answer any questions, but I can't emphasize enough that I think you've been through this exercise once, but you should continue to review and analyze this, analyze this with staff on an ongoing basis to consider how things are changing. And certainly, laws related to your ability to levy change, and you'll want to keep current with those changes as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I encourage those who have the opportunity to review this. It's, hopefully, the table of contents is helpful. There's a tab that has the appendices, which has all the details of all the line items and the account numbers that went into the structuring of the plan.
Okay, anybody on the council have questions for Dawn? I can attest to the fact that we spent hours on this plan, and parts of it each time, and I think it was a valuable lesson for many of us. And for some of us who have been on the council for a while, as Mr. Paulus said, the planning ahead is really, we really didn't have a plan like this. We would just kind of, and so looking at the debt over a longer period of time, looking how that debt payment is structured was very helpful, and I think I'll have a better outcome for the city in terms of perhaps some smoothness in terms of levies and-
Yeah, I think, I think, a couple things were kind of coming together at the same time here, is you had a TIF that had a good plan in place, and the time, things were kind of structured with a potential and a plan for growth. The growth didn't happen as quickly, or to some degree, not to the level that was expected. So you have, you had structured debt that was coming due in, starting, I believe, with the current year we're in and going forward. And so that was coming together at the same time. You had other capital needs that had been financed, that were structured in a fashion that you had no potential for adding new things to it without some significant increases. And so, as we get to the next item and talk about one of the difficult decisions on how to manage that so that the taxpayers here in Platteville aren't burdened with everything all at one time, and it's kind of a levying out of covering this and helping to support paying for this. And I encourage and continue to do, that you do the efforts you have been doing to try to promote economic development and new construction. Obviously, some of the efforts that are showing off, when you can see that your net new construction is even greater than some of our projections. But the more you can do that, the more you can encourage growth within your tax increment districts, as well as outside of those, I think you'll, you'll see rewards coming in the future.
Excellent. So, if no one has a question?
I have a question.
Okay.
It says on a recommendation here, accept the Long Range Financial Management Plan as presented. Do you make any distinguishing or any difference between using the word "approve"?
Well, I think-
Is it accept, or is it accepted, and we could change it?
You could, you're accepting as we've presented it.
As right now.
Yes, it's accepted. You're not approving-
But we're not necessarily approving.
No. What you're not, what you're not doing is, you know, we've made some forecastings for your 2018 budget in here. You haven't been through the process of establishing and adopting your 2018 budget. I think this is a good groundwork for that, but now we know some additional information about tax base and so on and so forth, that things that feed into those decisions. As your departments are presenting their requests for their 2018 operating and capital needs, you'll be evaluating that and preparing that. So you're, I think what you're doing is you're accepting the document as it's being presented to you as the plan that we work through as a group. But as far as approving it, I think approving is what you'll be doing when you adopt your 2018 budget. You'll be approving that, you know, and again, I think you should evaluate this every year once it's been adopted as a new budget. It kind of updates the planning efforts for the future. So if it says accepting, I think that's appropriate.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, so do I hear a motion? I'll make a motion.
I move to accept the Long Range Financial Management Plan as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Killian, a second by Ms. Westeby, to approve the Long Range Financial Management Plan as presented. We'll vote.
No.
Yes.
Westeby?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and now we'll move on to initial resolution providing for the sale of approximately 4.5, 4.365 general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2017B.
Okay, the reason we're even talking about this tonight is this is kind of an outcome of the discussion through the Long Range Financial Planning that we did. The city has a lot of older general obligation issues that are outstanding, that many of which were structured over a 10-year amortization schedule. And some of those obligations finance some pretty significant projects, like your police facility, which obviously have a long-term useful life and will benefit a lot of taxpayers out into the future. So, you know, they were already issued with that structure. As we looked at the building on of that debt, you were seeing some increases in your debt service payments. With the need to help provide some assistance to Tax Increment District Number Six, we were looking at a pretty significant increase in debt needs for 2018 and beyond. So, we were not able to look at anything specifically in TID-6 and say, let's restructure that to deal with TID-6. But since we were looking at support for levy, we looked at every general obligation debt that was out there. So back in 2014, there was an issue that was done, and I think that the bulk of this paid for public safety building, you know, when we went back and trailed things through. There's a small piece that was related to Tax Increment District Number Six as well. So what we did is we looked at every issue that we could to look at perhaps a refinancing and restructuring. And this is the one issue that kind of came out to the top of the surface and said, hey, we can, we can do this with this and provide some initial relief from your levy. And in doing this, is basically what we're doing is we're restructuring and refinancing this, taking that existing debt service and extending its life out longer. So the unfortunate thing with that is it, you pay more interest expense in the long term, and so ultimately, there's a future cost. But the cost that we've annualized within looking to this into a longer term, it provides the relief in the years you need it and kind of shifts, we can wrap that new debt around a point where your debt is dropping off. So the overall hope is that TIF-6 will start to improve, and you'll have less dependence on levy. So what this issue is doing, it's referred to as an advanced refunding, where refinancing it prior to its call date. You're replacing old debt with a new issue. Then the proceeds from the new issue go in an escrow fund and pay off the old debt when it comes callable. So the overall, I think the big picture of this is to focus on Page Eight of the document that I handed out, or is in your, I guess it's in your, I didn't hand it out, it's in your schedule, there's a pre-sale report. I think you have it in your packet, hopefully.
It's in the packet.
Okay, so it's entitled a pre-sale report. There's some narrative in this. The first several pages talk about the authority to do this. We talk a little bit about the reasoning why we're doing this, and the planning aspects. We're here tonight to adopt the initial authorization to proceed. We'll go through the same practices we have in the past with an official statement. We'll be back to sell the issue on the 12th of September, and then close the bonds in October, and then it'll set, the money will set in this escrow fund. So, but on Page Eight of this document is where we, the goal here was to provide some relief in the early years, and not only to help assist with the support needed for TIF-6, but also to assist in leveling off the impact of the existing debt in other places. relief in the early years and not only to help assist with the support needed for TIF six, but also to assist in leveling off the impact of the existing debt in other places. So you'll see in this schedule, the first 2017 is really rounding money that will go into debt service to help make, to make an interest payment on this, but starting in 18. Now this analysis, as I said, this is a changing, things change based upon current information. This is actually a greater savings in the earlier years and a less cost in the later years because interest rates are a little bit better than when we did our planning estimates during the plan. I also think that if rates stay where they're at, you'll do better the day of the sale, and this is even reflective. But the column to the far right of that schedule on page eight is the relief that you'll see and the savings that we'll see that'll help support TID six and your other debt, starting in 2018, it's about, under this, it's about 377, or 390, $299,000, excuse me. We were looking at needing about 277 in our original planning. So that's the annual savings, then starting, we're basically moving principal out, paying less principal early on, moving it out to 2024, at the point where this increase is the debt service that's greater because now we have a debt service payment where we didn't before. And overall, this is gonna, there's gonna be a cost to do this. Hopefully that part of this will be recovered by the Tax Increment District. We bring that down to a net present value and it's about 213,000, 214,000 cost. Over the course of time, it's about 760,000 in terms of overall, it's a little more principal overall interest cost. But I think the, as I said, it was a tough decision as we evaluated this with the council, but I think that the, it was felt that the benefit to, in the near term, to the tax, relief to the taxpayers was worth that, or to reduce the impact of the need for the debt service payments to the taxpayers. So again, I'm happy to answer any questions on this issue as well.
Questions? Anybody have questions of Dawn? My recollection is, from those discussions, if we didn't do this, we would have basically nothing for capital, for CIP next year.
Probably nothing for CIP, and you might still even be looking at.
Right.
Some increases. And not to say that you won't see some increases in your levy overall.
Right.
But this, this will help reduce that.
Right.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. On the first page, the cover page, impact of adopting proposal, it says there'll be a net increase of debt of 215,000 with this borrowing to be included in the calculation of city borrowing capacity. The increase in the interest expense was 350,511. Now, per what time span are these numbers given?
They're from 2018 to 2029 is the time span.
What's the span?
Twenty, from 2018 to 2029, that's the time span. So we're, we're replace, as I mentioned earlier, we're replacing existing debt with new debt. The new debt in principal amount is gonna be about 215,000 more because of the requirement to fund that escrow. But because we're extending the life of the debt from, we're adding six years to the life, we're taking a six-year issue and making it 12. So we have six years on the existing debt, we're now making it a 12-year issue, so that additional six years of interest expense on the debt is what's counting for the higher cost in interest. So it's that added six years of delaying the principal for an additional six years.
And then going to the executive summary on page one, purposes, the middle paragraph, it says the refunding is expected to increase debt service expense by approximately 560,000 for the next 12 years.
Well, it's, it's a net of that, so it's the savings and it's a net of 560 over that years. So that's the 215 and then the additional interest expense.
Then it says the net present value cost of the refunding is estimated to be approximately 214,000.
Yes. So that's today's dollar cost, so the net present cost to you is about 215,000 to do this.
So it's gonna cost us, in 12 years, it's gonna cost us $774,000?
No, no. It's, it's 560 is the cost, the total cost. It's, well, if you look on page eight of that, what you're holding in your hand, you'll see the savings of the early years, the cost in the later years to a net cost of 560, and then down below, we bring that to a present value. So we discount time value, we take in the time value of money, and we discount that down to the 214. So it's, it's discounting that 560 to today's dollar. So we were doing this.
What's it?
Page eight, I'm sorry, the page eight's got the schedule?
It's right here.
Yeah, it's here.
There.
So there's the 560.
562.
562, 149, 19.
Yep. And then down below where it says net present value loss is the 214. So that's taking the 560 and bringing it to today's dollar. And just to give you an idea of, you know, and I said I believe that we'll do better than this, our estimate on interest is we took an actual sale, AA3, which is what you're rated, that was done on July 11th, and we added 40 basis points, which is just under a half a percent. You know, the last schedule on here shows you where interest rates have been, so interest rates are down a little bit, so we're hoping that you'll do better. I mean, 40 basis point was to allow cushion, and we're probably pretty close to not needing that, so I think it'll still come in better than this, which means that the total cost will be less and the net present value cost will be less as well.
Okay, additional.
Another question is on page three, under other considerations. The last paragraph, starting with, in the event that the successful bidder utilizes a term bond structure, we recommend the city retain a paying agent. Would you explain?
Yes, certainly. And we probably have paying agent on a few other issues. What a term bond is, it was, is when we, if, on page seven, and we may or may not have this, but if we allow for a term bonding, on page seven, each year there's a principal payment. The bidder could group principal payments together. So for instance, if we look at the last two payments add up to 825,000, they could say, I can sell that block as a block at 825,000 rather than two separate blocks, and they would term it up with one interest rate versus two interest rates. What happens then, and this gets rather complicated, is there's a mandatory redemption. The city pays it based upon this schedule, but the investor has invested at the block, so you call, they have to have bonds called early, and you want a paying agent or a redemption agent to do that for you. So we would only do that is if there's, this has any of those terms put into it. If there are not, then you'll be on your own paying agent. So in the past, you've used Bond Trust Services out of Minneapolis, they're a subsidiary of ours, they would handle that for you on an annual basis, but if it's not necessary, then you would not need to do that. So it's basically a byproduct of whoever bids, how the bids come out the day of the sale.
Then on page four, underneath other service providers, we've identified as service provider.
So you have a bond attorney, and your bond attorney has been Quarles &amp; Brady, and Quarles &amp; Brady will prepare all the resolutions, they'll make the determination, they prepare the resolution you have in your packet this evening, they'll make the determination on the tax status of the bonds, and then you have historically been rated with standard and pores, so we take this to standard and pores again for them to do the bond rating. And the costs for those are all built into the issue.
Okay, those are my questions, I believe. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Then there is a resolution that has been prepared, 1718. Do I hear any motions?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 1718, resolution providing for the sale of approximately 4.3 million Geo Refunding Bonds Series 2017B.
Here is second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 1718, providing for the sale of bonds. We'll vote?
No.
Yes.
Westeby?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Dawn.
You're welcome.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is direction on the Pioneer, on the former Pioneer Ford site. So we'll start with staff.
Okay, I will start off with that. The council has been discussing that project for multiple meetings, and more recently, we specifically have been talking about how to proceed with the Gates Hotel, the former Gates Hotel property, which is part of that development project. At the July 25th meeting, we had a report from General Capital developer of that project regarding the, they're further looking at the Gates Hotel property to see if they had any interest in keeping the structure, remodeling themselves, and using it for rental under their own ownership. Their analysis has come back that they feel it's financially infeasible to remodel that building and keep it, so they're not in favor of doing so, they're not in favor of modifying the development agreement that we have with them to keep that building and remodel it. So that was the, I guess, the first step, step A in the memorandum of agreement we have regarding that property. Also in their report, General Capital had said they're also not in favor of modifying the development agreement as far as finding another developer to remodel that site, that building on site, if they're doing the project next door. There were too many unknowns for them to feel comfortable with that approach. So that was basically step B of the memorandum of agreement, was trying to find another developer. Step C was the attempt to find anybody, a developer, other entity interested in relocating that building off the site and onto another location and remodeling the building. The city did a request for proposals regarding that option. They were due on July 31st, we received no proposals, and I had nobody express any interest in that option. So basically now we're looking for some guidance on how to proceed specifically with that, that property, the former Gates Hotel property. Staff has really identified two main options as far as how we could proceed from here on. The first one would be continue to work on step B, which would be trying to find another developer to, you know, purchase and keep that building at its current location. We could do another RFP to aid in that search. However, that action would require an amendment to the development agreement with General Capital, which they've already said they're not in favor of doing that, and that step would also require an amendment to the previous approved zoning for that property, which had that building being removed. So the other option basically is to proceed to the next step in the memorandum of agreement, which is basically documenting the structure for historical purposes, salvaging materials if there's any that have reuse value, and then proceeding to demolition of the building. So those are the two options that we're, staff can really identify as how to move forward. We are still working with the historical, State Historical Society on whether they feel the need to pursue option B further. We are waiting for a reply from them, but we feel that the city is adequately proceeding with the steps as identified in the MOA. Any questions?
Any questions of Joe? Okay, I have one person who has asked to speak for informational purposes. Mr. Prohaska?
Name is Gary Prohaska, I live at 280 Division Street here in Plattville, Wisconsin, and I'm presently a member on the Historic Preservation Commission. Going back timeline-wise, the 4th of January 2017, Joe Carroll had given an update on the building. Prior to that, there was no discussion or even contemplation on the building not remaining on the site. We were given an update that the planning commission the day before had moved to, well, request, you know, in their debate, had decided that maybe it'd be a possibility to remove that building from the site. City Council, City Council had heard that information, and I think that was on the 10th and the request for demolition. 12/13/2016, you received in your council minutes on January 10th from the Redevelopment Authority, a whole thing on that that building was gonna be remained and reused, and that was in that packet. January 17th, there was a letter to City Manager reconsidering, a request for reconsideration that the building wouldn't go down. This is all coming from the HPC. Now, that's where it kind of started on this building. The determination, historic determination information was sent in on the 13th, and we received that letter of historic determination on the Gates Hotel on the 15th. All this process, starting in January, all the way up through till just lately, has all been approved. Let's see here. Anyway, I got it wrote down here someplace. Here it is. All communication was recommended, directed, developed, approved by the HPC before sending, and all names were on these letters. And after the new MOA, the HPC was concurring party on the MOA, the first one and then also the second one. So anyway, I don't know if you've received this last letter that was sent out to both Karen Kurt and Joe Carroll, but this went to the state, Karen Kurt and Joe, who received it in carbon copy, went out to the HUD representatives, the ACHP, advisory council on historic preservation, and Chip Brown, the SHPO here in the state. And it was, as a concurring party, the Preservation Commission is, when they have any complaints or want to have anything readdressed or anything like that, they're a party that sends these letters on. And this has all been processed, developed by all of the party, all the commission members. And in the letter, it stated, this Plattville Historic Preservation Commission, HPC, is notifying you of the need to readdress the MOA memorandum of agreement. This MOA was required under Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act and the ACHP Regulations under 36 CFR Part 800, which I know you've heard about numerous times from me. To refresh your memory, the common council at their general meeting on July 25th, 2017, received a presentation from General Capital, which is what Joe just talked about, and a statement they did not wish to develop the Gates Hotel on the site. General Capital stated that it was financially infeasible to develop and did not wish to use the historic tax credits. Further information also presented on the RFP advertised for removal of the Gates Hotel from the site and develop, that's step C of stipulations. There also was a presentation on the RFP advertised for demolition, step D and E of stipulations for the number of bids already having been received. During council discussion, the council liaison, Ken Killian for the HPC and another HPC member, Gary Prohaska, informed the developer and the common council at the meeting that the next step was to write a request for proposals so that other developers could submit their proposals for restoration of the Gates Hotel on site. There was no more discussion or any move by the council concerning this. Demolition bids were then scheduled to be placed on the common council agenda for August 8th for a vote and acceptance, which you're gonna be doing tonight. Gary Prohaska, a member of the HPC, spoke at the same time, a same council meeting, and spoke for general information, which I'm doing now again, mentioning that the building was historic, and because it was historic, an MOA was. mentioning that the building was historic and because it was historic, an MOA was generated. The MOA process needed to be followed fairly and shown that the city tried to honestly follow each step. The process has to be followed in order. Also, there were developers who had shown an interest in developing a hotel on site, and a purchase price should be at least a hundred and seven thousand so that the city and the developer, General Capital Group, would not be adversely affected. Gary Prohaska stated he didn't want this project to fail, but the MOA process was required and their actions or inactions could jeopardize their funding. The law and the process is required. That by one or the other side stating they did not want to change the developer agreement did not constitute completion of step, stipulation step B. Neither the common council nor the developer is willing to change the developer agreement. At the HPC meeting on July twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen, the commission had the Gates Hotel on the agenda. After discussion, the HPC felt that stipulation part A of the adopted MOA was fulfilled, and the city would be required to follow the next step of part B, which could result in separating hotel project from the, property from the project, but allowing the hotel structure to remain rather than being demolished. The HPC has requested a number of times since the adoption of the MOA to advertise for RFP for purchase and development on site. Further, the HPC requests said developers of this RFP develop the building using the Secretary of Interior Standards, using historic tax credits, and that the purchase price of the property of the Gates Hotel be set at a hundred and seven thousand. This was the monetary amount of value of the property stated by the developer, General Capital Group, as well as the Platteville Common Council and staff. This would ensure no financial loss by the city or the developer. The circumstances are that the property Samuel Moore House Gates Hotel will be adversely affected by this proposed federal undertaking. Under the developer agreement signed between the city of Platteville and the developer, General Capital Group, Planned Unit Development Specific Implementation Plan, former Pioneer Ford Site, the Samuel Moore Gates House Gates Hotel has been slated for demolition to provide for additional parking. The common council has only shown an interest in moving or demolition as shown by their motions, RFP ads being approved and votes. There was a motion, a second by the HPC, to draft a letter to contest the council's action. As a concurring party on the MOA, the Platteville Historic Preservation Commission disputes and objects to the actions of the Platteville Common Council on following the steps under stipulations of the adopted MOA. Under MOA five dispute resolution, we object to the manner in which the terms of the MOA are implemented. A new draft MOA was developed and passed by the common council on July eleventh, two thousand seventeen. The MOA is still in draft form, waiting on a reply from one of the invited signatories. The HPC is expressing concern about this most recent language in the MOA that initially seems to address questions the co- commission had previously raised, but doesn't appear to be consistent with the consensus of the HPC. The single issue is with the language of the last line of paragraph B. If neither party agrees to modify the developer agreement, then the city would proceed to step C. This line could be paraphrased. If the parties are unable to reach an agreement to modify the developer agreement, then the city would proceed to step C. The intention of this agreement is to conduct a good faith negotiation to try and save the building regardless of who the parties are. This would suggest that conversing with third parties to see what may be done to work with a concurrent developer and the city is a reasonable consideration. But of course, but first, of course, the city and the developer ought to determine whether the current developer can in fact use the building and work with the city to modify the existing agreement without having to introduce new parties and new requirements. This was completed in stipulation A, and stipulation B follows. The HPC agrees that the hundred and seven thousand that we've heard before is a reasonable value of the Gates Hotel property. If there is a developer willing to spend a hundred and seven thousand to pay General Capital to make them hold, then the city and General Capital would be hard pressed to say no to such a modified deal. The idea is that the basic elements of the original deal must be satisfied or maintained without imposing additional hardship on one or both parties, at least not without their consent. Based on information provided to the Historic Preservation Commission, the failure to follow stipulation, stipulation B with a good faith effort could result in the loss of HUD funding for the city and the developer. The Historic Preservation Commission asks that the developer and the city of Platteville be officially informed that other developers are to be invited to restore the Gates Hotel on site through the use of the request for propose, proposal process. The HPC requests a response from the Department of Housing and Urban Development and the Office of the SHPO regarding this concern. Yours, Platteville Historic Preservation Commission members. And they're all listed. They were all approved of this letter that was sent. The commission did receive a reply only from one of them, and that was Chip Brown at the state. And it says, "On another topic, I take Gary Prohaska's earlier today email", which is the one sent on behalf of the HPC, which was approved by the HPC and developed by the HPC. All member, all members said email very seriously. "I agree with his interpretation of the draft MOA provisions, especially the issue of providing outside developers the opportu- opportunity to propose rehabilitation of the Gates Hotel on its current original site while ensuring that the current developer is not harmed by this plan modification. The intent of the agreement was to maximize the use potential of the hotel while assuring that developer and city are not harmed in the process. In light of Gary's email letter", and that was from the HPC, "please explain how this issue is being addressed and, and resolved." And Joe did send a response back, and I'm sure he will give that to you shortly. But anyway, all this process started in January with the planning commission, and it's been in the process ever since. So anyway, that's the only information I have.
Okay, thank you, Gary. Anybody with any other questions? Or is there any, uh, additional staff input? I think tonight it's, uh, our decision as to where we are in following the memorandum of agreement that was developed. And, um, so...
So I, I just have a couple of questions, just to confirm that, uh, step C involved the RFP to move the Gates Hotel. You said that ended July thirty-first, and we had no one come or present an RFP, or no one has come to even discuss other options.
I have received no interest from any entities on that, and no proposals were submitted.
Right. And, um, as Gary said, this is, this process, the one that you're referring to, has started in January, but this process actually has been going on for more than a year or two at this point, and we haven't had anyone come to the city to offer any alternatives for, uh, the Gates Hotel. So I would like to make a motion that as the city and developer have been unable to reach an agreement to modify the project and the development agreement to separate the hotel property from the project, the city should proceed to step D of the MOA, subject to confirmation that the city is in compliance with the MOA.
I'll second.
Okay, Catherine has made a motion. Would you read it again, please?
I make a motion that as the city and the developer have been, uh, unable to reach an agreement to modify the project and the development agreement to separate the hotel from the pro- project, the city should proceed to step D of the MOA, subject to confirmation that the city is in compliance with the MOA.
And that was the second we heard. Anybody with questions on Catherine's motion? Catherine basically is saying that since the city, uh, stipulation B was, if the discussion results in an agreement to modify, then certain actions would be taken, and if neither party agrees to modifying, then the city would proceed to the next steps. And so she's making a motion that says we've done what we would for B, and therefore will proceed with the next, uh, stipulations. Any questions?
Well, uh, you're saying to proceed to step C, stipulation C.
Step C, yep, and we've already, and then to step D.
A question I have for the council is, um, Gary read the August fourth letter from the HPC. He read the whole thing. That's our last communication with, uh, with the parties, the concurring parties. Now, um, reading what Chip Brown wrote here, Chip Brown is... So my first question, did you, um, get, receive a copy of the August fourth letter?
I received a copy and I received Joe's response also.
Did you receive a copy at all of, of Chip Brown's response to Joe Carroll?
Yes.
Yes.
So it says here, "In light of Gary's email", that's the HPC letter, "please explain how this issue is being addressed, resolved." So we believe that, that stipulation B has not been met. A good faith effort has not been met, and that we should be proceeding with stipulation B as given by Joe Carroll here as one of the options as far as what to do about the Gates Hotel.
And Ken, I believe that you also received a, uh, letter that, uh, Joe has sent to Chip Brown explaining and, and answering the questions within that. So, um, I think that he has documented, uh, many things. I think he, uh, I'm sure you have that letter. Uh, it came to all the council members. And I'm, it had several attachments on it, including, uh, lists of meetings and, uh, the memorandum and, uh, the response from General Capital and the pro forma. So there were several attachments to that letter where Joe responded, and I think Catherine, your, uh, motion said...
That, "Subject to confirmation that the city is in compliance with the MOA." Joe's response did clarify a lot of, um, what I feel Chip's questions, but Chip has not responded at this point, so part of my emotion is, "Subject to confirmation, the city is in compliance with the MOA."
Okay, any other questions?
We have not heard a response yet from the other, um, concurring parties.
No response.
From HUD, the two, two sources, HUD and also the Advisory Council. No response yet.
No response.
Any other questions? If not, we'll vote. No?
Yes.
Westerby?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
No.
Motion carries. Okay, the next item on our agenda then is, uh, demolition bids.
Okay, we, we did, uh, advertise, uh, uh, for bids to do the demolition work on the Pioneer Ford, uh, development site. We did receive four bids for that project. They were actually very good bids as far as being a, a tight, uh, bid spread, so that is very good in my mind. We, we broke the, the bids into basically a base bid, which is the, the other two buildings that nobody really seems to be too concerned about, so that's the base bid. The low bidder for that was rural excavating. They had a bid of eighty-eight thousand dollars. The other part of the, the bid was the alternate bid one, which would be the work for the former Gates Hotel building. Rural excavating was also the low bidder for that part. Uh, they had a bid of twenty-two thousand five hundred, so, um, they were the, the low bidder overall with a bid of a hundred and ten thousand five hundred dollars. At this point, because of, there's some question about the, the, uh, MOA, and, uh, we're waiting for a response from, uh, the state, staff would recommend proceeding with award of the bid for the base bid to rural excavating for a bid of eighty-eight thousand dollars, and that would be for the other two buildings, Fifty South Water and Seventy South Water Street. And, uh, we would, uh, request tabling the other part until the next meeting, the alternate bid. Any questions?
When would they start this process?
They can start as soon as they're given the notice to proceed. They have to do a, a required notification to DNR, uh, before they can do that. But, um, if we get to go ahead, we'll start that process tomorrow. There will be some asbestos removal included, so it'll be a little bit before the buildings themselves come down.
Okay, so the recommendation of staff is to award the base bid. Uh, the rural, rural excavating was the low bidder, uh, for all phase one, phase two, and the alternate bid. The recommendation from staff is to award the base bid for phase one and phase two and to, uh, uh, leave the alternate bid until, uh, we hear from these other agencies.
Correct.
You said the next meeting before. Which is it?
So that's a total of eighty-eight thousand dollars?
Right.
Well, I would say the next meeting unless there's an urgency that comes up with something, then we would see if we need to...
Okay.
Call a special...
Do we actually have to table the other bid, or do we just... Can we just be silent on the alternate bid? We can be silent on the alternate bid. Okay. Okay, so the question then is rural excavating has, uh, there were four bids submitted. Rural excavating was the low bid for phase one and phase two, and if need be, the alternate bid two. The recommendation of staff is to award the base bid eighty-eight thousand to rural excavating. Do I hear a motion?
Also move that we award the, um, phase one and phase two bid, uh, for eighty-eight thousand to rural excavating, uh, Platteville.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to award, uh, rural excavating the bid to, uh, phase one and phase two demolition at the foreign, former Pioneer Ford property site. We'll vote? No?
Yes.
Westerby?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, next on the agenda is the commercial building lease for a portion of City Hall. Uh, this would be to Friends of Our Gallery and Jan?
Yeah, I can take care of that one. At the May twenty-third council work session, there was a consensus of the council to move forward with renting a portion of the old police station, the former Maker Space, and, uh, to the Friends of Our Gallery to store their permanent collection and maintain a small office space until they can find a permanent space. So the lease, there is going to be a change. The lease would actually start September first rather than August first and would run month to month at seventy-five dollars a month. So requesting approval of the lease.
Is the Roundtree Gallery no longer with the city? They've already separated?
Yes.
They have no budget with the city.
But they have their own budget.
Yes.
Yes, they do.
So the, uh, request is to approve the lease with the Friends of Our Gallery, seventy-five dollars a month starting September one. Uh, Brian, you drew the lease.
I assisted Jan in drawing the lease.
Jan and Brian was the, uh, was the, uh, two together. Anybody with questions on this?
Well, I will make a motion to approve the commercial building lease for a portion of City Hall to the Friends of Our Gallery.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the commercial building lease with Roundtree Gallery effective September one at seventy-five dollars a month on a month-by-month basis. We'll vote? No?
Yes.
Westerby?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, next on our agenda, if I can find my agenda. I love it when I can't do that. What's next?
Shooting range.
My, there we go. My, my mouse wouldn't move. Renewal of lease for the property used by the police department is a shooting range. My favorite. Bruce?
I guess Doug just gave me a few notes. In nineteen ninety-nine, we paid twenty-five dollars for the first twenty-five-year lease, which expires in two thousand twenty-four. The cost to extend this would be twenty-five hundred and twenty-five dollars, which is a hundred and one dollar a year for the next twenty-five years. Uh, we are projecting this as a worst-case scenario for the lease, uh, term for two thousand twenty-four to two thousand forty-nine. Uh, we hold that option for the second twenty-five-year lease at the maximum yearly rent of a hundred and one dollars a year. And, uh, in case you're wondering why we're bringing this up now, is just that there's only a few of us that are actually aware of the original terms of that lease, and we don't want it to get overlooked through attrition. You know, if Doug leaves or I leave and Lieutenant Haas leaves, that's about it for those of us... You know, if Doug leaves or I leave and Lieutenant Hawes leaves, that's about it for those of us that are aware of what this lease is about, and we didn't want it to get forgotten.
Okay, so this is a request, and, and you would be prepaying this now?
Yes.
And it would extend through 2049?
Correct.
That's a long time. How are you going to know? Who's going to remember that?
Somebody will have it written down, and there's always a bean counter somewhere.
Somebody's going to... Luke, we're going to count on you. How's that? Okay. Do we have questions on this lease arrangement? Do we have a motion of any kind to, as it relates to this lease arrangement?
Also move that we renew the lease of the property used by the police department as a shooting range as requested through June 1, 2049, and a maximum cost of $2,525.
We have a motion?
I'll second.
And a second. Any questions? We'll vote. No?
Yes.
Westerby?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries. Well, that, I believe, is the last of our action items for tonight.
Yep.
And so the last part of our agenda then, we'll have an RFP for a city attorney because we have a city attorney who thinks he should be retiring, I guess. Is that a smile I see on your face, Ryan? From ear to ear? How long have you been our city attorney?
I started Assistant City Attorney in 1988, and then a city attorney, I believe, in the latter part of 1994.
Okay. 30 years.
Yeah.
Wow.
That's what it is.
Maybe we'll even have to have a cake or something. Or 30 years.
Any excuse for cake.
Any excuse for cake. Okay, Nicola?
So, yeah, we're very sad that Brian is choosing to go play golf or something like that. And so we do need to look for another city attorney. As you probably are aware, the city attorney position is a contracted position, and so we have drafted an RFP to receive proposals from firms or individual attorneys that would like to become the new city attorney. So we're asking the council to review the RFP and to let us know if the council has any changes to it, or otherwise to, I think at the next meeting, accept the RFP, approve the RFP.
So you're looking for input between now and perhaps the Friday before, or the Thursday before or so, so that if there are any requested modifications or any suggestions, they could be incorporated?
Yes, if possible, the two by, by the Monday before, the week prior, because that way, if there are any changes, it could be included in your packet.
So actually, then by next Monday, the 14th?
Yes, that would be that.
Okay, by next Monday, the 14th. And Nicola, can you tell us how you arrived at this RFP? What went into creating it?
So we, we had a brainstorming session at our department head meeting where everybody had some input as to ideas for what we need for the different departments for a city attorney and how the city attorney services are utilized across the city. I forgot how to do that. And then also, we conferred with Brian and got some input from him and utilized resources from other municipalities for RFPs that had been issued by them, and then put together this draft, which we went through, that I went through with Karen, and she provided her edits as well.
All right, so it's a collaborative effort that brings this forward. So again, you have a copy now, and so by next Monday, the 14th of August, if you could get any suggestions, any edits, any kind of thing like that to Nicola, that would be great, then it could be incorporated as an update in the packet for the meeting on the 22nd.
Thank you, yes, that would be great.
Great. Any questions on that? I believe that's the only information item on our agenda.
Can we ask a question?
Oh, sure. You got a question?
On the first page, it says, "Staff is suggesting that a review committee be established consisting of one council member and four staff members." How did you arrive at four staff members and one council?
Well, it was decided that probably the people that would utilize the city attorney services the most would be the city manager, the chief of police, I believe it was Howard, I forget now if it was, I believe it was actually Joe with all of the development work that he does, who uses a lot of city attorney services, and then myself as the person that would coordinate the process. So those would be the four staff members, and then, then the council would put forward a volunteer to, to be the council representative on the committee.
Will the council members be able to read all of the application?
Yes, I'm sure that they could if that was what the council desired.
Okay. And then the, looking, looking at the end here, under... Under process, so the review committee would make a recommendation to the council?
That's correct, yes, sir.
To the council?
To the council, yes.
To approve or disapprove the selection that has been made?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No questions. I have some changes I can give though as in person.
Okay, then that's the only, that was the last item on our agenda.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second to adjourn? We'll vote? No?
Yes.
Westerby?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.